This conference will now be recorded.
The North Elvettown Hall at 2:45 PM on Thursday, November 4th, 2021. As we all know, we've been delayed a little bit with technical problems and it is now 3:12 PM. And at such hearing, any person may be heard in favor of or against the preliminary budget as compiled or any item or items contained therein. Senior citizens and minority groups are welcome to participate pursuant to Section 108 of the town law, the proposed salaries of the following town officers are hereby specified as follows. Supervisor, $37,195.60. Councilman each, $8,134.10. Town clerk, tax collector, $55,291.60. Superintendent of highways, $69,454.19. By order of the town board, Lori Curtis Dudley, Town Clerk, Town of North Elva, and it was dated October 26th and published October 28th, 2021. Kathy, our budget officer.
There are copies, there's four copies here of what I just gave to the board. If anybody is interested in looking at it. I'm going to just read, start off by saying that this is the preliminary budget and it is still, even after today's hearing, subject to change before it is approved and adopted by the town board. So as it is right now, the tax levy is $4,776,423, which is a 2.69% increase over 2021 tax levy, which represents $125,176 increase. The total budgeted revenues, not including the tax levy, is $5,243, excuse me, $5,243,044, which includes our two capital project budgets totaling $2,184. The total budgeted expenditures are $10,523,886, which again includes the capital project budget expenditures of $2,184,000. And the capital project, the majority of that $2 million is for the Raybrook Water District construction. And $130,000 of it is for purchase of a highway equipment. The total fund balance that is appropriated is $505,633. The total taxable assessed value in the general fund, which is the entire town, increased 5.45%, with all other districts in the fund assessed values increasing between 2.8% and 6.9%. Our medical insurance rates are increasing 9% for next year and our retirement has actually decreased for next year because the retirement system decreased contribution rates across all our tiers. The general fund specifically has budgeted revenues of, excuse me, increased budget revenues of $253,700. And I detailed the highlights of some of the major changes. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read them aloud. Budgeted expenditures increased by $65,405 for the general fund. The next page is the town outside, the villages, which represents the beach and the highway. And that budgeted revenue increased by $95,000. Budgeted expenditures increased by $331,750, the majority of that being for increased paving and purchase of highway equipment. Also proposed adding a new motor equipment operator position to the highway. The park district fund budgeted revenues increased $25,817. And the budgeted expenditures increased $427,812. And the major increase in that $427,000 is because all of the $750,000 that we're paying to Orta is in the park district fund in 2022, whereas many part of yours is spent split between the general fund and the park district fund.
Which is for the record was misprinted in the.
It was misprinted. I, Lauren and I talked about it and I'm sure it's probably somebody just didn't hit a number zero or it didn't get put into typeface or whatever the issue is, but it's not $75,750,000. On the next page is the fire protection districts. All three of them have decreased this for 2022, a total decrease of 108,000 or almost 15%, which was quite surprising, but nice. The road district to Hollis Way, its budget for next year is $4,046 and that is solely to pay the debt for having that road put in. Again, and also consolidated sewer district, their budget is solely $5,800 for the purpose of paying debt. And then finally, Raybrook Water District had the biggest increase in prospective tax levies by percentage. For 2022, the operating budget increased $8,600, which doesn't sound like a lot, but the tax levy increased $9,800 because for two reasons. We budgeted less revenue because the sale of water out there is not something that can be predicted and it looks like the DEC, well with COVID and stuff, I guess there wasn't as many people camping. So the larger accounts didn't have as much water, so we don't want to project having more. Also, we're not projecting any revenue from the DOCCS because we don't have anything in writing. There's no, nothing that's certain on that. So the bottom line is with the increased use of the village of Lake Placid's manpower out there, they're going to bill us more. And as it stands, we have less revenue to pay it, so the difference is taxes because there's not a lot of fund balance in Raybrook. And then going forward, probably for the first year or two after the construction is done, we'll have to pay that debt service and, you know, we don't know again, if we're going to have revenue from DOCCS looking on. So it's.
Hopefully a temporary problem.
Yeah, hopefully a very temporary problem. So that's, that's the budget as it stands in a nutshell. Everything else, if anybody saw what was written in Lauren's article was pretty accurate, except for as Emily pointed out, the $75,000 was in this print. So if anybody has any questions, now's a good time to ask, but I, you know, send me an email, give me a call.
Is there any, anybody online that would like to pose a question? Make a comment? Sure, do you have any idea who's on?
Darcy's. Lauren's from the paper.
Lauren, do you have any further questions?
Sorry for the misprint. It's all, it's good Lauren, no big deal.
Yeah, I was just going to say sorry for the, sorry for the error.
Anybody in the room have any comments, questions, concerns? If not, if not, I would just like to thank Kathy. I know you put a lot of time and effort into this and meeting with all of our department heads. And thank you for all the input. Everybody I know has put a lot of thought into this and I think it's a good budget. And hopefully it'll get us through the year. As you always say Kathy, it's a guideline, it's a map to follow.
Absolutely. And, and as you guys review it before Tuesday's meeting, if there's any changes that you want to address, you know, like I said, it's still open to discussion. We can, we can add more, take stuff out, adopt appropriate more fund balance if necessary or, you know, all kinds of changes.
Sound good.
Okay?
Thank you.
May I have a motion to close the hearing?
Sure.
Derek? Emily? All in favor?
Hi.
Close carry. And now close the hearing. The hearing is closed at 3:21 PM. Okay, Ed, you're here for the order. You know, Mike had another meeting.
Mike and Bob both have another meeting, so. My name is. Hello, everyone. My name's Ed Kowaleski. I'm Assistant Counsel and Construction Counsel for the Olympic Regional Development Authority. Mike and Bob couldn't be here, so they asked me to give you an update on our project, so here we go. There's a lot of activity across the street, as you can see. The last of the four concrete pours is to take place next Tuesday, November 9th. And if all goes as planned after that, it'll be open for skating before Christmas. So that's going to plan. There's a lot going on there. The 32 rink by mid-November will have ice on the rink itself. That project's nearing substantial completion as well as physical completion. It'll be in use by the end of November. The 1980 rink, once they're done 32, they're going to focus their attention on the 80 rink. Ice will be on the 80 rink and up in U D boosting by Christmas as well. So then we'll have all three rinks in operation. We're putting in a new refrigeration plant, which is impressive. It's a large structure, but the energy savings are going to be incredible. That's going to be used for the 1932 and the 1980 rigs by mid-November.
Is that the same spot where the, where the other machines were?
I believe so. It may downstairs, there's a room downstairs, which is, I mean, it's just, there's all other types of equipment and stuff that I don't understand that is going up there. But that will be able to provide the cooling necessary for all the rings by December, so that that's going well. The link building, they're tearing it apart and they're actually starting to put it back together at this point in time. It's mostly on schedule and the estimated completion date for that is around August of 2022. So that's going well and they experienced a bunch of difficulties, but things are going well there. The Olympic jumping complex on Tuesday, they started actually jumping on the, what's called the summer mat. And today they had a ribbon cutting grand ceremony at nine o'clock.
I got to jump in. I was there.
Okay.
And it was extremely impressive. And I know all of the jumpers, the US team was there, Nina, Lucy christened it this morning.
Yes.
And just every comment I've heard is just fabulous. And everything from A to Z looked just incredible. And 120 probably be ready next week or so.
Sure.
Just a three, getting ready.
Good show.
Yeah. And there's the, the USA ski jumping will be out there for the rest of the week at different times. I brought some schedules, which I'll leave for anybody wants to look in, go out and take a tour plus. Yeah, out on the mountain Hovenberg on the paved track, they're also doing the combined. So we've got training going on at both of the venues and out at Mount Hovenberg inside on the push track. That's being used day in and day out through December, where we have to do some repairs on the lights above that. But that one's being in full use and it's getting a lot of use, a lot of attention. So the admin building, the last delivery of the contaminated materials were delivered to Franklin County this morning. So the hospital is down and if all goes well, that will be completely taken care of by the third week in November. So that contract will be complete. Bass Hat Field is the contractor on the building of the new building, at least the G contractor. The foundations are in, the steel structure is up, the elevator shaft is completed. Let's see, metal decking is going in and the core concrete, the underground utilities are nearing completion. And from all estimates, that's going to be done by September of 2022.
I went by this morning, I can't believe how quick that's gone up, the steel structure.
Well, what we ended up doing is at the time that we're putting the project together, we knew that there was going to be a problem with the procurement of the steel. So we separated out the steel contract. So that was left first so they could get it ordered and then start putting it together. So that, and that's why that one's nearing completion, just because of the fact that we knew that there's going to be long lead time for the steel. That's why that took off, but we were able to do it so they can, the steel first and then do all the other parts around it. So that's, that's going well. And if all goes well, getting closed in, so we don't have any winter condition problems, so everything's going very well. Anybody have any questions?
The little hockey rink over here, is that, was, is that hooked up to the main refrigeration? If it is.
It is going to be hooked up to the main refrigeration.
And it's still on the same timeline available?
Yes. I, I, I'm not really sure when that's going to be available. I would think so. I don't know why it wouldn't be, but if there's any difference, I'll get back to Jane and then you can update the board.
You may not know this, but the, the, they were, which you know most about it, they were going to put a water line.
Last I heard, it was still questionable.
The water line was going down the new fence.
Yeah.
And that really didn't have anything to do, that was part of the school project.
Yeah, well, that one that they buried, got buried. So then we asked the construction guys if they could put one in from the building down where the ground was. And I've heard mixed things on that, that yes, it did happen or no, it did not happen. But Brad Hathaway assures more the staff that he has to dig into where the old one was.
Ed, any chance there's any new update on the contaminated material that went to Malone? And, you know, we're trying to put all the invoices together and stuff for payment on that. Do you have any more info on that?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I could look at that, either Mike or Bob.
And mostly it's just for clarification for me, even though the account is in the town's name, Orta will actually be paying the bill or will the town be paying the bill?
Or basically.
Went back and forth.
Referring to the.
The latest.
Franklin County?
Yes.
Oh, right. Yes, no, I'm on top of it. I drafted the agreement, I'm involved. Basically what happened was is the agreement said that the town was supposed to get the invoices. They were going to provide them to us and then we were going to pay them and provide proof of payment. I got an email from Kathy yesterday, basically saying, I got this statement and it says the invoices were given to the driver. That makes a lot of sense because the drivers, you know, four parties removed from Orta. So what I did is I emailed Kaylee out at the, out at Franklin County. She provided me with all the invoices.
Okay.
And there was the last delivery today. She emailed me that invoice. I sent it over to our construction department, so that'll get paid in short order. And then I'll make sure that we get proof of payment over to the town, so they can show that everything's.
I know it's a formality.
Yeah.
I'm sure tracking stuff down with 50 different truckers.
They just get this, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do with it. So, and plus they're not responsible for getting it paid anyway, so they don't have a raise as they say.
I get it.
So we have everything right now and they're being processed.
Thanks.
Okay.
Amazing work done this summer.
It's, it's mind boggling really how much is being done in such a short timeframe and on top, I mean, really on top, on top of. The rings are a little bit different, the link building, it's pretty much new is, is that's going well. The museum's in the process of being designed right now. That's going to be very, very impressive. And yet the oval is amazing in and of itself, just given enormity and the size. And now that we're pouring concrete in November, that's going to be more of a ripple, but yeah.
Wonderful. I really appreciate you jumping in here for Mike. A lot of balls going.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
I love.
Roost, MJ.
A short update. So a couple of things, we continue with the Ironman committee. So we have closed the survey. The next committee meeting will be in two weeks and we will have the results of the survey to review and they'll all be public in detail. Also, we have Dave Kristen, who is our new representative from Ironman. He has joined the committee. And so he spoke yesterday, there was a whole list of questions that the committee put together prior to him joining. We gave it to him to look at and then responded to it yesterday. We had two public meetings this week for the destination management plan, Monday at 8:00 AM and last night at 5:30. I think we had a total of about eighty people participating in those two calls. And we're at a good place as far as, you know, we got a lot of input. There's six objectives that have been put together from close to 100 interviews, between individual interviews and focus groups. Greg Oates will be here from the 15th to the 19th and I believe that he will be looking to meet with this board, but unfortunately. In regards to marketing, our big push right now is the marketing plan for 2022. We have all of our winter planning in place and we are doing some pretty big pushes this winter. On the snow is one of our biggest buys for Lake Placid. We're also working with the World University Games to really start promoting that in 2022. In addition, we're working with Village on their no smoking law in public places to help with the Silent Angel World be collaborating with the appearance committee on that. And last but not least, we're creating a new Lake Placid guide. It's going to be now, it's like a, it's tall and it's like a threefold. It's going to be more of a magazine, higher end guide for the travelers. And that's just a quick snapshot, very quick snapshot. There's a lot going on.
I'm sure.
And the, have you talked to Jen recently about the county?
I have not. I haven't heard her here and I have not followed up, but I certainly will see how she's doing.
Be good.
I won't do that. We only can see the activity once they leave our site to go to theirs. So I'll find out if she's getting any application and how that's going.
It's, it was a good program. Yeah. Every little bit helps.
Absolutely. In regards to our position, we just recently hired a communication coordinator. We haven't had a communication coordinator since November of 2019. They write a press release and we've had our content team doing it, pitching to travel writers, responding to inquiries and also helping with our communication in the local communities. So once we are for our new communication coordinator, which is going to be sometime towards the end of November, we're going to hire a third party PR firm just to help us with the community, communication strategy. Like we feel like we need with the World University Games, with the community with, you know, there's a lot of pieces moving around and we don't do a good job sharing what our program of work is and the things that we're doing. I mean, LEAF is a very good example. You know, obviously that's not our program, but that information's not getting out. The money, you know, like the results of that program. And, you know, same with the destination management plans, same with Ironman, like we just don't do a good job in that area. So we're going to focus on that.
Mary Jane, we're all so busy that we're chasing our tails a lot. It's not that things aren't getting done. It's just that it's so intense right now that it's hard to feel like things are focused on every point. So you're not alone.
That's good to hear. It's not, it's not for a lack of trying, right?
It's a town that doesn't sleep anymore.
Right now, it's a, it's a town that's under constant renovation. I wondered, and I didn't know, I was appropriate to ask, but is the building for the oval, will that be completed as well? The warming hut or?
It's a timing.
It's, it has to be done by March. I want it soon to be done, but it's not warming. It's judges only.
It seems that they have some other buildings ready.
Some need to be changed.
With heat and all that stuff changing. We'll see.
Well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks MJ.
You're welcome.
I hope we didn't rush that too much, but.
No, I just hope that if you have any questions, you know, in between now and.
As fast as I could.
And everything is in that folder that we shared.
Yeah, I know. The way that, you couldn't, trying to print that thing out.
Well, you couldn't, you had to open up each individual.
It was pretty.
Project.
Yeah, you did.
For the future.
Do you want?
Yes. Not so much this time, but in the future, I think if we had to print out.
And we can also, like, I have a summary right here, just that you can kind of maybe follow along during the meeting. So you'll have the applications in entirety, anybody that wants to open, you know, have a print and we can. And then you can have like a summary so that you can see.
Yeah, that's all.
We'll do that next time.
But ahead of time.
Absolutely.
It's kind of, to open those and it's just timing.
It's a tree killer.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our next words counsel.
I'm sure he has. He just muted himself.
I'll comment when necessary.
So a few updates on our end. We have a, a big focus right now is on the 2021 University Games. They were originally supposed to be in December in Lucerne in Switzerland. They were postponed until, sorry, they were originally supposed to be in January of 2021. They were postponed until December. So we have a contingency that's going over to participate in an observer program. It also includes at the closing ceremonies, the flag handover from Lucerne to Lake Placid. So we'll be bringing back the flag with us. We should start to think about a location that we either display it or hang it or. So I'd like to, you know, put that out there if there's any, whether it be here in the town hall, but somewhere visual that it can be displayed until the games where it'll then be flown and taken down and handed over to the next host city.
It should, it should be inside or on a pole?
I'd have to check out if there's like concerns about, my assumption was is that it could be outside and could be, you know, like on a pole. So if there's reference, but I'll double check to make sure it's not, I don't think it's a historic. I think it's more of a symbolic of the VCU flag. So we'd like to have solidified a place when we bring it back. Additionally, at the, in Lucerne, the VCU executive committee has a board meeting and that's where they do official approvals. We will be putting a number of documents forward for approvals. One of those is the final competition schedule. We've done a lot of work balancing out between the three regions. All of the competition schedules with a number of things in mind, obviously. We want to make sure of broadcast coverage, we want to space events out so that we're not competing against ourselves for spectators. So we've done quite a bit of work to balance that out and are prepared the end of this week to share and anybody that would like to see the draft of that, we're happy to share it with you. And we'll be asking for official approval of that wall in Lucerne. In addition, some of you may be aware that the university games, what makes them unique outside of the sporting events is the educational component. We're required to do a two to three day conference. The concept of that will be based around sport and climate change and how those things, especially winter sports, go hand in hand. We have the draft of that concept and the layout of that two day conference. We'll go to VCU for approval as well. It will include keynote speakers on climate change, again, trying to tie everything back to sport and how some of the climate change issues are having negative impacts on winter sport. And there's some great stories here with the Orta renovations as to ways that they've tried to mitigate some of those changes. Jane and I were at the jumps today and got to see firsthand some of the sustainable efforts that went into that, so.
Does the conference happen at the same time as the games?
Yes, it runs during the games. So we have targeted the weekend prior to Martin Luther King. And the, we're working with Clarkson and with Paul Smith on it. So some of the sessions will be at those sites, but what we're trying to do is pull things to the venues. A lot of times in the past with VCU games, the educational sessions aren't well attended because it's, you know, lectures or in that sort of format. So we want to bring things to the venues to, you know, to the audience. And it's not just for the athletes. We'll also be reaching out to other universities within New York State and within the region. They can send people to participate. So it doesn't have to be sport related. It's really to, to bring the local universities and programs together and coincide with the games. And we have a couple, we've been discussing a little bit with the high school here, if there's ways that we could tie into some of their programs. Additionally, we put out, or we will be putting out an RFP by the end of this month for event security. So the private security that will help support public safety. We're trying to design that so that we can hopefully have some of the local companies here bid. Even though it's a large project, they could bid on one portion of the project. So that will come out the end of this month. And we hope to award that by the end of January so they can plan for it. We've also spent a lot of time on accommodations. This has been a concern. Everybody's aware that the Peaks Project will be at 101 units, where initially it was slated at close to 300. We're working on those numbers. We're trying to supplement. So we have what we have a, we call a hybrid model between, it's not a village and it's not a complete hotel model. We're trying, we're working on solidifying the contracts with some properties here in town. We should have that wrapped up in the next two weeks. And then we can start the planning for additional transportation. We'll have to centralize dining, mostly at the conference center and some of the other facilities that would have been completely built out at the Peaks if it was all in one place. So a bit of a curve ball there, but we're reacting, coming up with a solid backup plan. And lastly, the championship events. So we have the, opened the registration for the long tracks VCU getting championship event. We have seven countries already registered weeks, we're anticipating between 10 to 15. Unfortunately, there are some nations that are having issues with visas, so normally would compete but cannot. Those at the moment are Russia and Belarus. And it's, it's more on their side with their embassies not processing visas. And that's been pretty standard across all international events here in the U.S. We are, we're, right now we have about 55 athletes registered. Typically this event sees 75 to 100 and about 10 nations. So we're targeting that we'll have, have the same. And we started to put it together and we're working with ORDER very closely on the COVID protocols for that. We are going to require that every participant has vaccines. So that will be a mandate for that event. That's it for now.
So the COVID thing will follow then the governors.
Well, and also I believe it's being released that on November 8th. In order to fly to the United States, you have to have proof of a vaccine unless you meet an exemption. So we're, really it shouldn't be that restrictive to anybody wanting to compete because if they have to get on a plane to get here internationally, they would have had that same part.
Couple of quick questions. Is Mackenzie Development part of housing for you for athletes?
Yes, so we have a contract with Mackenzie Overlook.
I thought it wasn't for athletes. Sorry, I was just clarifying his question.
Oh, you, did you say for athletes?
Yeah.
It's not determined yet that it'll be for athletes.
For a more extent.
Yes, because one of the beneficial pieces about Mackenzie Overlook is that it's going to be done early. And the contract that we have is for handover on December 1st. So we have the whole property for two months, which it's great. We could potentially put athletes there if we need, but we do have a lot of short term workforce that will need to be accommodated. So we think it might make more sense to put that type of client group into the property since we have it.
That's fine. All I care, it's being utilized.
Absolutely, yeah. And we did meet with the developer, he came up and met with a group of owners about a month ago. And there, he's saying they're ahead of schedule and if you've seen it.
Yeah. Security, New York State Police and of course Chief Moore. I assume everybody's kind of working together.
Yeah, there's a, they call it a public safety working group, largely led by Troop B here. It includes other agencies, but Chief Moore really unchucked off since the point person, he's in all those meetings.
Okay. Lastly, lots of talk about how many people that this is going to attract. Everyone is convinced that it's so many times more than the 80 Olympics. I can't fathom that.
No, the, twice the time, and then this gets said often. When it's, when you hear that it's twice the size of the 1980 Games, it's the athletes competing. There will be 1,600 athletes.
Okay.
That's twice the size of what competed here in 1980. The spectators, no. We're anticipating what we have right now on our capacity models and projections. And this includes all three regions, our 250,000, but that's tickets sold.
Right.
So a family of four going to five events, that's 20 of those, 250.
Sure.
And a lot of those, we've looked at, you know, what's going on at the same time? Because there's multiple events going on at the same time. So we know what the bed capacities are here, but you can only, you're not going to expect that people are going to run around all day into four different events. So we've really scaled back what we anticipate for spectators. But 250,000, let's say tickets sold over the 12, it's really 12 days and the three regions.
Yeah. So on any one day, there's 20 to 30,000 people.
Between the three regions.
Right.
Yes, yes. I, I don't think this is going to be something larger than what this town is used to on a normal Ironman day or something, right?
Good.
We would be pleasantly surprised if that was the turnout that we had for the extended time.
Every rumor seems to be exaggerated.
Yeah, yeah. And as we collect more data, and that's one of the things we'll do in Lucerne is data capture on how many people are going, what events are they going to? It's a little bit of a different demographic there because it's a larger city, but some of that data capture will help us drive the spectator projections and get more accurate on that.
Are each country or university liable for their own transportation? Or is the fleet idea still part of what you guys are working on?
So we're responsible, once they arrive, if they arrive, Sapplesburg Airport is the main point of arrival. So if they get to Plattsburgh, from the point that they get to Plattsburgh, we're responsible for them until they get back on a plane to go home.
Okay.
Port of entry.
Port of entry, yeah. And so if somebody goes into JFK or Montreal, we'll give them recommendations on bus companies and other ways to get here. When they get to the Village, all of their transportation from Village to competition venue to downtown, we'll take care of it. And there will also be a spectator network. The plans are, and I, which probably knows a little bit more than I do right now, there will be a transport hub, where we have horse show grounds for spectators.
Still waiting for the guy to call me.
Okay.
He's been, he says, I'll call you next week, I'll call you next week.
On the Gregwood visa?
I am.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll push him on that. So there will be spectator transportation because the Olympic Center will be our biggest use. And you can't park to accommodate those people, so there will be a shuttle service.
Broadcast center, yes.
Broadcast center, we're trying to actually do a lot of it remotely through a trailer. So it may be an additional trailer that's put in Mount Van Hoekenberg because they have quite a bit of infrastructure. But what we've done is, normally you would have one broadcast trailer at every venue. We're looking at remote, so we've cut it down to four broadcast trucks. And we've split up the competition schedule so that the truck at Gore is also covering the Mount Van Hoeken coverage. So that's why the, the schedule was really challenging because we couldn't have an overlap between those two. And you have to build and reserve days for weather. But that's helped us cut down the costs of the broadcast by about 30%.
From whatever it goes, primarily U.S. and Canadian, right, broadcast companies versus your three obedience coming over?
For to cover it, or?
Yeah.
So we'll produce a clean feed and anybody can pick that up from the IBC.
But we produce that feed.
We'll, we'll produce just a clean feed, so there'll be no announcing anything to it. They can pick up all of that footage from the competition and then they can produce it. We are working with ESPN on their coverage and that will be produced here.
Great.
All right, anything else?
Questions from the?
Yeah, he's been telling me he's going to come. I wait. Tommy, right?
Tommy.
Tommy.
And he's here next week.
Next week.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Let's see, Haley.
It was 9,500 for the upstream. We get that for the LEAF grant. See, we, I finished the application for. Finished the application for the Housing of Hair Assistance Fund last Friday that's been submitted. There were some hiccups this past month with that because KPEC had a COVID outbreak. And so they were scrambling to get their own jobs done. So, but we managed to submit it, so we'll see how that goes. See the website, the town gave the unofficial okay to go forward with the rise as long as, of town and village, as long as the town is also on board with that, which it sounds like you all are. So once we can get an official kind of okay from the village, we can start contract negotiations, which hopefully will not take long. We'll, we'll work with, based, kind of based on the original RFP, how we put out. And then hopefully that's kind of the majority of the terms that we put in there. Kate has some other thoughts, especially regarding security, want to make sure we're putting something about that. And then hopefully we'll be able to move forward with that in the next couple of weeks. So.
You need a go ahead, I think like right now for revise.
I think we, I don't really know what an official go ahead for that would require, but I think just some sort of okay from the.
We do a resolution Tuesday.
Yeah, okay.
Can I turn and say something, Haley? It came up and I've always mentioned it to you, that the LEAF committee is looking for a six month report.
Yes.
As a grant.
Yeah, so we submitted a six month report. Just they were there, they do require one, and we just said that we're in the process of making a power recommendation. So it's been submitted. But yeah, that was it for the website. Once we get the official okay, we can finally serve.
Do a resolution on Tuesday, man.
All right, speaking of resolutions. So for the Climate Smart Communities Program, you passed a resolution. I don't even know when, but it was essentially forming a task force for the town. But you kind of skipped a step, which I didn't realize either on, like, last week, where you have to have another resolution pledging yourself to like these 10 principles. I don't know if that's something that we can do in the next month or so. It's really straightforward. It's all about, we can register the town and get started on like.
What 10 principles?
I. Yeah, I sent them out on this week, but this week or last week.
Is that resolution we did a long time ago, I think was just for COVID?
Task force, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is a separate one. The task force one actually is like, you kind of like jumped the gun, I guess, because I get them confused too. But that comes after the, the one that I need to get done soonish. Yeah, I'll forward that to you again. It's really straightforward. It's just like.
Why even if it's just an addendum to our original resolution and we pass that?
Well, because it needs to be two separate ones. It doesn't need to be separate. But it's straightforward. I'll forward it to you again. Then we get done, it's not a huge rush, but focusing on the village at the moment. Let's see. Oh, and speaking of Derek, since I have you. Receipts that prove the village uses the complex facility, is that something you're still able to get a hold of?
I sent it through.
Oh, did you? Okay, okay.
I sent it to Elise.
Okay, good. Just wanted to check.
I'm sure I did because Shannon copied all those things.
Really?
All the tonnage and revenue that came in. She probably had to call Kathy, I don't know.
Okay, perfect. That's all, that was it for the Climate Smart Communities. Let's see, comprehensive plan, Dean asked me to let you know that the Development Commission will be approving the board in January with kind of a start. I don't really know what to do with that, but hopefully we will have at least like a steering committee and maybe some idea of what we're going to put out for an RFP at that point.
What is that for?
The comprehensive plan.
Oh, yeah. I always have.
And then, yeah, the management plan. Right, he's going to be in town for a week in November and he's going to be with the Development Commission during that meeting, during that week, I mean, and get input from them. But otherwise, I think that's it.
That's enough. You got enough going on.
And the CDBG? Application?
Yes.
So that's then.
Yeah.
What do we need to do? Do we need to do anything at our next board meeting on that?
We do not. We're just waiting to hear back. It has to take a few months.
We're good, we did a lot of hearing. Okay. You guys have anything for the newsletter? Don't forget to.
Thanks, Haley.
Thank you, Haley. Okay.
I'm going to trade you the mic.
We're swapping. We're going to get Darcy to, she can get her car. I really don't have anything, don't already know about. Thanks for, to LEAF people for giving us the money for upstairs room. We definitely need the technology up to, if that gets approved Tuesday, I'll tell Dave on Wednesday to get gear and get going, if that's all right for you guys. The, we have a look, according to the super on the job over there, they're two weeks behind. They have an issue getting a roofing contractor and the, the head of the organization wanted to leave the roof open for the winter. That's not going to continue to build up and do all kinds of stuff. So we'll see. There's no guarantees, obviously, with construction, especially in today's market with everything being delayed and the supply chains and so forth. I don't know what, I mean, I know what the rules up to it, moving dirt and it's getting organized, but I don't, I don't foresee any quick turnaround on anything near either, so.
I saw a whole tractor trailer load of Schedule 40, looked like six inch stuff. Was it headed there?
I don't know, probably.
Okay.
He's, I mean, he's putting in drainage.
Yeah.
But he's, he's had, he says, he keeps saying he's four months out with the pipe, the Brad needs, the sewer lines and so forth. So we'll see. Nothing, you know, no buildings going in till we have the infrastructure. And so there's no disconnect there. We don't have buildings without sewers and so forth.
Right.
So it'll be interesting, but I mean, modular, I always order something already. I don't know what, what those folks, but that's not my business. Just when I get the plans, we'll move forward. So I saw him get the plans.
But there's no foundation, so if he does have any comment, they've got to pour slabs.
Yeah, they got to put slabs, they got to put frost wall slabs.
Yeah.
Everything's modular, so it's all going to be pre-built.
Yeah.
Put in place, which will go quicker. But then I don't know, you know, what detail of finishing, I know there was talk early on that he wasn't going to complete then with, you know, stoves and so forth, just basically a bath and a bath. So the athletes have someplace to sleep and clean up.
All right.
So we'll see. Hopefully it all works out. Any questions?
No.
Did you give me a boat here?
No, but I found it two different places. I'll tell you, I got a third one. I want to stop up at Crescent Bay to see if they have it. Yeah.
Thanks, Mike. That's it.
And if anybody knows whose boat that is that's on a trailer.
Godfrey.
No, it comes and goes.
I was told it was already spoken for.
Oh, all right.
And you talked to.
I drive by it. I wanted to call Peter, you know, they've been parking right on the edge of that field there. I go by it to go to the dump, I come back, it's gone.
I think it's forty.
Okay. All right, I'm looking.
Steve Wilson had a couple of comments, suggestions.
I was going to say a couple of boats.
We cleaned it up. There's a few dealers, Brent's Falls, I think he said.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mike. If you got any questions, we got something, I can see it on you.
Well, I'll be in touch with you because I don't know if we need to put an ad. I know you have one person interested for the light work. I don't know how, how much we search, but I'll be up.
Well, again, you're going to hire him as a contractor, it's.
Independent, yeah.
Independent, it's, I don't know if you have to do an RFP or not.
Right.
You know, that's, to you guys, you want, you want more than one engineer, that's another, you know, that's the other question.
Exactly.
But I think you can get away with like the professional services.
You got to get a boat first, I know.
Well, we'll get him there. He can ride with Tommy and the boys. Beautiful. So we have a sample of the Terrapin office. And the neat, neat part of it, and we do it today, we saw it, I've never seen it before. I don't know if you watch football games much, and when they slide and stuff, you see stuff moving on turf. You're like, what the hell, it's not dirt. They put sand and then they, on top of the sand, and they put a ton of sand. They've got bags full of, they're, they're spreading out with big spreaders. And then they take the chopped up tires that are used and they put that on top of that. And then they come over. No, it all goes in between. So I think it's to force the grass to stand and it gives it some, some couches and some cushion. It's amazing. It's amazing stuff. And then they had a brush machine that goes over and makes it look, you know, like a professional stadium. It's really neat. It's really neat, so it would be, you know, next year I'll put the dome over and put it in. Thank you guys, thanks, Todd.
Haley. This will be easy.
This will be easy. Hammered it out with a skate for a residential trend, which is very dominant, trend of value. Seven one, 2020 to seven one, 2021. And I warned you all along, it's going to be double digits, but it's. So it's 11%. The early stuff didn't have all the edits that the state does, take out the highs and the lows, the weird. And we worked with the most solid data and I concluded 12, 13%, they concluded 11. Put that as a gift. And so generally speaking, that's what you can count someone who asks you how much value has to go up is coming. Now, subsequent to seven one, 2021, which is valuation day, I stopped plugging sales for the year there, basically speaking. Subsequent to that, the numbers are higher, but we might have a crash come late winter also. So no real speculation there, but the early indication is a higher trend than that for next year.
11% assessment, which doesn't equate to 11% tax rate.
Well, if you didn't touch the tax like, right, and the values went up 11%, which did well on average. Your tax rate would decline 11%.
Right.
So that's where, I mean, no sense in chasing rates.
No, no, but if we take Kathy's figure of 2.69, that things went up.
That's the tax levy.
That's the tax levy, but that helps us prove the difference between his 11% and the actual tax rate.
Sure, the tax rate will go down.
Right.
So. In the heads for last two years.
Yep.
Other than that, I've just been collecting and processing data and running circles.
Well, that's been the theme of everyone that comes up here today. You shouldn't be any different. Eat Vansina?
Need last year's make-up. No pressure.
No, me neither.
Okay, thanks Todd.
Thanks Todd.
Let's see, Ken, is Ken?
Ken, yeah, I got Ken.
He's Ken.
Okay. Von Rich there, relining the coverage started yesterday. That's going well. And then he's getting the, all the trucks ready for fall season.
And they're doing haul and sand.
And downtown lake sand.
And they were just.
They've been ditching too.
Just prepping all the roads and looking for problems. He's looking pretty good. They're in good shape.
The only thing I should report is tomorrow morning, the emergency repair we talked about over those two garage doors. The demo will come off. Then Lance Rupert was the only foam guy we could find to come in. We have to rig up 100 amp breaker to his machine and it looks like Monday or Tuesday they'll spray that. And then they'll start doing the fix. Now, the fix is going to be secured, but it won't be extended out so far as the eyebrow. Just so that it can shed water and is insulated and won't create heat loss.
What's going to be the surface?
Metal. And we're, we're trying to secure brown so it matches, but that's not.
Did we get a quote from them?
No, only because no way to know what you're into. It's a.
I was just, is this a temporary fix or is this supposed to fix the whole issue?
It's temporary, but we're doing it with the idea that we won't have this process done with architects and drawings and the whole bit for at least a year. So even though it's temporary, it is a.
We put some money into budget for next year for the garage roof. So that's going to stay there because it's, this is only temporary.
And it's really not roof, but yes, it's all around the curve. Yeah, what do we do? 100 grand?
We put 15,000 in.
15?
I mean, it was just the.
Yeah.
Which makes it sound like that's what's getting done right now. Where I'm going is it sounds like the 15 we put in for next year is what's happening right now.
Yes, that's right.
So.
Yeah.
Maybe we should take 15 out because it's going to come out of unbalance anyway.
I think.
Next year.
You're the best juggler, so I don't care where you.
I'll talk to Kenny about it soon as soon as.
Yeah.
Okay.
To Marcus down in San. Are you getting that alert, you're going back road disabled?
Yeah.
We go out towards Katie, where all of this towards Prune that way.
Yeah.
He has metal and stock.
Oh.
Roofing, brown and green and stock.
You don't know the name?
Yeah, Marcus. It's Marcus Lumber. If you go that back road, wherever that back road.
I got a couple. I'll see Devin tomorrow. He thought he'd have everything secured by now, but if he hasn't.
I know he has.
Yeah.
He had it at, what year is this? Then it's a couple years ago. 20, I signed by five summer. It was cheaper than anybody because he was just charging the same price it was when he bought it.
Yeah.
So.
Good.
Good. Thanks Doug.
Okay, just to go back to the order report, I did have the opportunity to get a tour through there on Thursday and see everything. And it's a little scary, but you have confidence that they'll, they'll get it done. 32 rink on the outside is beautiful, with brand new seats and stuff, but the locker room situation is bad. We're in worse shape than we were before we even started this. There's, we used to have kind of four and now they're, they're saying there's two plus because there was a design flaw that they have to fix up. And the 80 rink area just doesn't, I don't know how fast they're going to build, but it's pretty much torn apart. So, but that's, I mean, there's really no, nothing scheduled until Jan, January, so I'm hoping that they'll get going on there.
Were you surprised to hear Ed say that those three rinks would be ready in December?
The refrigeration plant I went in and it's beautiful, it's state of the art. So I think it can be, but I don't know the need for that right now, but that's something to figure out. It's really, the only people using it now are a handful of figure skaters, some youth hockey in North.
You have no high school or youth stuff scheduled in light class at all?
There's some youth, all high school is going to go over to Serenac Lake until January.
Okay.
Because we, we need locker rooms. You just can't bring a bunch of girls that change here, so.
Is it the surface of the 80 rink that's all torn up?
No, the hallways.
Just the hallways?
Yeah, the hallways, there's stuff work and dust and plastic hanging everywhere, so.
Well, plus all the steelwork they're doing in the main.
Yeah, and then up top along the.
All the paintings.
Resinene, there's still concession stands that are partially done and stuff, so.
32 ceiling is getting done.
Ceiling, ceiling, 32 ceiling got done. It's finished with acoustical stuff. It looks gorgeous. The building itself looks like that. Nice blue seats in there that kind of set off everything, but the underneath is, I don't know what they would think. We're going back, I wish they would have talked to Can-Am, talked to the users and say, what do you really need here?
So if there's only two locker rooms on the height, it can't be the high school's rink.
No, no. They're, they're saying maybe three by, by winter carnival, so we're going to have to move winter carnival into the 80 rink because they think by then there'll be four locker rooms available down there, because you need four locker rooms if you're having any kind of tournament, because there's always two teams on the ice.
It makes that rink almost useless.
Yeah.
Right now, it's tough and I think they finally recognize that. They, they built two locker rooms up the front end under the where the stands used to be and once they got them done, they figured they were too small and now they're trying to combine them both to use as one.
To make a third locker room?
Yeah, to make a third and that, there was, there used to be three underneath the stands and now there's two. And they're, I don't know, they're thinking of moving the same one to the other side and putting one back where the carpenter shop is. So they.
The carpenter shop has got not either air filtration or condenser units hanging down below the doorway. They can't even bring in a piece of plywood.
It's tight, so, but they, they recognize all that, so.
Your old man would.
And then, and then, like I watched the hockey box. It's today a little better. They were starting to put the underlaymen under where the pipes go, but the pipes are not laid yet. And I think they're concentrating on getting the oval done, which is what they have to do, but then they'll move over to here. But I think it's a matter of turning the valve on, once they get that done and refrigerant will go through those pipes. And once it's done and over, they had a few glitches there, they fixed that out, that like they changed the size and didn't really ask anybody. So their, the order guys are saying, why'd you do that? They're adjusting, they're going to have to cut the dashboards down a little bit.
Oh, I hope the plans that got in the hockey box leaves that isolated.
It is, it is, it is. You can, I saw the stubs coming out of the track. Okay, they're there.
And their valve?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, so that, yeah, I wouldn't, I don't know why you would do it any other way.
Right.
You want to shut that off when it's time to shut off or just turn it on when the timing come on?
Sure.
Yeah, so, and on that, what was interesting, I got a email last night from Graham Frazier, who you all know was the Army guy.
He started it.
He started it off and he understands what's going on and he's saying that he might have somebody interested in the chiller, which is sitting down by that. So, and it was Dr. Smith and Rick Young from town. They want to take a look at it. Take a look at it. They want to do it, but that's just part of the.
That isn't for that possible rink out on our showgrounds, is it?
No, I think that's, whoever, you know, Doc Smith likes to just skate everywhere, so who knows what those guys. So I'll be showing them that at some point. Okay, work is, we're finishing up fall. The guys at Craigwood have done a great job cleaning up the yard there. They, they had a bunch of metal that was piled up. They got Army's dumpster in there to get rid of the metal, so that really looks nice in there. And lacrosse fields are just about done. Volleyball, which I should have asked her where they are. They got it all cut in and roughed out. The boards are not in, but that's no big deal, I don't think. I think that will be taking a little time in the spring.
I think they didn't even want to deal with frost.
Yeah, good, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
So that'll be back on the agenda in the spring. At least they can get that off, they can help. They did move our stands over to the other side and that contractor I thought was really good, Rucker, Rucker.
Yeah.
So it was good to work with him. He was a good local, hardworking guy. Whatever we said, he, he usually had a better idea than what we wanted and worked out with. So that's where we are now with that. Get that in the spring and, and the events next August, so.
Did you give them contact info on the fencing that you want?
Yes.
Okay. I'm betting the timbers won't go in until they back in the first loads of sand where the courts actually are.
Yeah.
So they don't have to keep going over them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then my last item is, has to deal with the Craigwood restaurant. Our current restaurant manager, Scott Vow, has acquired a golf simulator and is going to operate that on like an appointment basis. So if we wanted to go out for a session, we would make an appointment, go out and sit and play golf, have snacks or whatever.
Where would it be located?
In the dining room.
Right in the dining room.
It's like an enclosed thing, so he, he's looking at that. Now, if you understand the agreement, he's the manager for our, our last D sugar shakers, Richie Wright. I talked to Richie the other day and he is confident that he can turn this all over to Scott, which would be easier. I talked to Derek about this. It'd be easier in the whole long run if we're dealing with one person. He's a local guy. He's done a great job since he came in mid-Jan, mid-July.
Excellent.
And he's, and I talked to him about it today and he's definitely on board with it.
Now you mentioned it saves them between 10 and 15%.
Yes.
In payments out of what he's already doing.
There's no reason to pay him that many.
No, and there's, and there's a, and he's looking at possible if, if the winter takes off and people go out there and slide and stuff to open up for hot chocolate and donuts or whatever in the afternoon like that. Now, the agreement says it kind of is over around October 1st is what it says. So I'm just going to ask Ronnie to clarify that and extend agreement to the, Richie said he would hold on to the liquor license and stuff till, till Johnny, till Scotty gets his. So I, if we can extend that to cover that, we should be good, but it does say, it says, and that's easy to do. It says, agreement may be renewed by mutual agreement of parties. So that, I think Ronnie can do that.
Well, the major issue is two, liability insurance and the liquor license.
Yes, Richie has that now. So until that got turned over, we'd have to still go under Richie's.
And liability insurance is the same for operating a golf simulator as it is for a restaurant? I don't know enough.
It would be total.
It just doesn't matter what you're doing.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I, I, did Derek send you the screenshot? I thought that he had a, I found out about it on Facebook today because he posted on Facebook to call and make an appointment. And I was like, you know anything about this?
Well, he, he had done that before and I told him, don't do that until I talk to you guys. And I talked to Derek this morning and he, he probably was anxious to get it going, to get it out there, so.
So as long as nothing starts until you're okay with the insurance?
Yes, yeah, I'll get that tomorrow.
And we keep the building anyways, right?
Yeah.
I think it's exciting that there's going to be something going.
Yeah, take some pressure off your.
There's a lot of sliders.
And I think, I think it's going to be different, maybe, Jack, you may know, when Cascade Inn being sold to Adrona Camp Club, that trail system, it sounds like it's going to be free. So it's not going to be that issue anymore of people, Cascade Inn worried if somebody skis on our track, so. I think that it all works out. Cascade Inn goes through that whole trail system, be good and they can come and ski around the golf course and enjoy it.
Well, more you get the local views out of it, it's a lot easier to sell. If it's spring, they might not be prepping it though. Maybe we have to.
Yeah.
And I told Butch, early in the season, when everybody's bitching at him because the toboggan chute can't open because the lake isn't safe. We should have the shuttles pick people up at hotels and bring them out there to slide, make them buy lunch.
We can pass that along to the hotels.
Yeah. I mean, it's something.
There's a couple of good hills there.
Yeah. Put some walls or something.
Yeah, because up on the ninth hole. That's a good one there. Now Kathy will bring this up too, but on the amendment or the adjustment for Jeff, as is 50% of the golf range, we're going to have to do a resolution or something chill, chill.
Yeah, just because it wasn't in a contract.
Not in our meeting.
Yeah, so at the board meeting, you guys do that, then I can put it through to some personnel.
Jeff told me today, he's leaving tomorrow, I think he said. So if you have his home address, send it down there.
Do you have the board?
Yeah. That's it. Building is going good. DMV has really settled in and it's smooth now. There's not the long lines anymore.
Is the curd machine working yet?
No, I don't think so, but there's, now there's two or three where before there was 10 or 15. Village is looking, is putting that wall in that they, I don't think it's necessary, but that makes them happy.
You put the divider?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's been really good lately and I think the initial rush got over and I don't know if other places are opened up or not, but there was a while, there were 15 people down the hallway.
Well, they're coming from Serenac Lake.
Yeah, yeah. So that is going good and you can actually tell the girls in there are, are much happier because it's, they're not getting tired all the time. So that, that's been working well. Maybe they'll expand it as spring comes or whatever.
Where do they park much?
Down below, I think.
Stream is a lot.
Okay. Yeah. It's amazing, we're starting to loosen up here a little bit. Like yesterday I noticed Parkside, which was usually full at 6:30 in the morning, was empty. So I think whether some workforce is leaving or whatever, so it's starting to ease up around here.
It's only November and April though.
I know, it's going up Main Street today. It was.
Yeah.
Slowest and spotty.
Definitely better, doesn't it?
A lot of work going on still, but. People around.
Yeah. Okay, good deal. We'll get our little tractor ordered tomorrow.
Sounds good.
You should.
Well, I gave you guys most of what I had earlier, but I don't have updated financials for the end of October yet. I'm just waiting on a couple pieces of information. So hopefully end of day tomorrow, I'll have those out to you guys. We did talk though about personal wages for Craigwood. We're going to be way under budget this year. I, not, let me rephrase that.
Way over budget.
Way over budget, thank you. I'm sorry, my head feels like it's in a cloud right now. I did a basic calculation. It looks like to get through the next four pay period, four pay days that we have left this year. I did a, a basic calculation, it looks like to get through the next four pay period, four pay days that we have left this year, for Willis, Matt, and, and Barry, their salaries, we would need about another fourteen thousand dollars, assuming that they only work straight time for the rest of the year, which I talked to Butch about, and he said he didn't think that there'd be too much overtime for those three guys. So that's coming. I think for the highway, we're gonna be okay unless.
Storms.
Well, knock on wood, we did get some yesterday, but, you know, I was thinking more along the lines of vacation buyouts, because a lot of the guys wait until the end of the year for Christmas, they don't get, they, they use their longevity, and I'm guilty of those two, health insurance buyouts and vacation buyouts for money to buy Christmas gifts, and that, that's the thing that happens. So we'll see how that plays out, I tried to budget for that, but you can never predict who's gonna buy out and who's not, so.
And they don't start on five days a week until like December first?
No, I think they're on.
Right after, right after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
They're still on four days.
Are they? Okay, which doesn't really matter.
No.
Because it's still forty hours a week.
But it, yeah, that adds to overtime real quick when they go back to five and something happens.
Well, yes, that's true, so, so anyway, I wanted to, uh, let you know about that, and then, uh, something else that came up today, actually, which brought it to my attention, I missed it yesterday, and I don't know, again, I, my head's around, my head's just not a hundred percent right now, but apparently, our guys, all of our guys, highway and non-highway, um, everybody, all of our union and non-union employees who have clothing allowances and we, and they go to IBC, have apparently been buying clothing and shoes not for themselves, like for family members. So this just gave to my attention, which brought to my attention today, and so I asked Rose, I said, well, you know, go pull everybody's, hey, let's just take a closer look. So I'll pay the bill. We're talking a few hundred dollars total, but here's my thing, when we have our open enrollment, which is gonna be go-to meeting, I have to talk to all the employees because they have to give me their forms. I'm gonna tell them, you guys need to stop doing this or you're gonna lose that benefit. Now, the thing is, in the union manual, it says that they get it specifically for ANSI-approved shoes.
Yeah.
And uniforms, doesn't specify what kind of uniforms, but when they're buying logo t-shirts that say life is good and Crocs.
Yeah, highway or who the?
Everybody, highway and non-highway, it, it, it's, I have copies of them here, so, uh, I just, when we start. I don't wanna make a big deal out of it because it's kind of involves union employees, but on the, on the, on the same viewpoint, they're using that benefit. So, and, and, and it's my fault too because I didn't catch it sooner.
Do they turn in receipts?
We get bills, they, no, so what they do is they go to IBC, they have, we have a spreadsheet, IBC has a spread, you know, they keep a list. These are the employees for the town of North Elba with their names in the dollar amount, and they keep track of it, and we keep track of it, so the, we're on the same page. But IBC apparently hasn't been enforcing the safety shoes and uniform, you know, fluorescent t-shirts.
I wanna say this.
Well, but they're supposed to be going off of an approved list of clothing, which they haven't been doing, and Rose and I haven't been paying that much attention to it, because most of the highway guys that comes through, it says Carhartt jeans or Carhartt shorts. We don't care.
Right.
That's fine, there's no shorts during the summer, it's all right, but, but today we had one that came through saying ladies' Crocs, and we're like, what? And Butch brought it to our attention, so I just wanted to let you guys know that this is going on, and Rose and I are gonna take care of it, but.
Yeah.
We can't discipline one employee and have let all the other employees slide through the cracks, so.
Cross the board, listen.
Yes, just a reminder. Right, and basically it's gonna come down to, if you guys abuse it, it's gonna become, instead of having an account at IBC, you will get the money in your paycheck and it will be taxed. The whole reason we do it through IBC is so that they don't get taxed on it, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, and they totally didn't take with them, right?
They don't have to pay taxes, you know, so they can go to IBC and get a pair of Carhartt jeans for sixty bucks, that's tax-free to them. But if I give them that sixty dollars in their paycheck, they have to pay whatever their twenty percent tax rate is for state and federal and all that stuff.
But then they, there's a second tax.
And then they have to pay the second sales tax, right, so, yeah, so it's just, you know, I just wanted to let you guys know that that's going on and we're, we're trying.
Your partner thinks they're in the money, giving the money, but also if the union, if, if we were saying you can, you know, we're gonna let you buy this or that, the union should, they should know that too, that they're going to do the wrong thing.
Right.
Because.
Oh, I'm gonna talk to all the employees.
No, the union, the union.
Oh, the union, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because he needs to enforce that also, because he'll come after us for it.
Right.
I don't see why we wouldn't go after him and say, listen, you talked him into fixing it.
Yeah.
Or else we're gonna, we'll change something else.
I don't.
That's normal, that isn't abnormal, then we'll see what happens, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think that's a wrong thing to do.
Okay.
The seven hundred dollar benefit, isn't it?
We're trying to help you and they're buying just. That's not part of the, that's not, you, whether, thus violating the contract.
Right, yeah, so, I can, I can definitely do that, so, and while we're on the topic of, of the union, I have a copy of the email that went back and forth with, um, Ken, Ken's request about the pay scale stuff, which I think is reasonable, but I have not done a calculation yet to see how that would affect our wages, but I cannot imagine that it would be more than a five thousand dollar increase. But I will look into that hopefully tomorrow and let you know. If I understand it, what he's saying is get rid of the top two lines completely.
Yeah.
And, and everybody who's on, just move them all one, move over from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, right?
Right.
And I think, you know, we're, Derek talked earlier, this is consistent with the union does, so opposed to say we're gonna be five percent across the board, this, this is more consistent, and they should accept this.
Right.
Unless they stop, unless they stop buying Crocs over.
So, yeah, I mean, I asked Rose, I said, well, just call that employee and ask them who they bought those shoes, I wear men's Crocs. So there's nothing that says that a, a male employee wouldn't wear ladies' Crocs, but they shouldn't be buying Crocs anyways, that's not a safe.
Different shoe.
Exactly, so, but anyway.
They're slippery as hell in snow.
So. Yeah. All right, uh, so the other thing I have is just so you guys know that I'm not dismissing things. I did, and I emailed it to Ron and CC'd everybody on it, the question about the sales tax. He hasn't responded to me, so I don't know if he's just not, um, it's not on his tabular life. Honestly, from what I read in this, we, if, it's not a membership, if it's, if you're selling, if you're selling, uh, right, uh.
Murder.
An eighteen-hole golf pass, you're supposed to charge tax. Now, here's the thing, I were, I really want Ron to say yea or nay to this, because if we start doing it and we haven't done it all these years, how's that, I mean, is that gonna open up a huge liability for us in terms of figuring out what we should have thought of this year?
You went through a year about it.
They didn't, they didn't, they moved to me about it.
That's what I'm thinking.
You know?
Probably, they would've, they would've caught that.
I, I mean.
That was, that's.
I think a lot of it is up to interpretation, so I don't know, I mean, how long has Craigwood been around? My predecessors never did any sales tax stuff, I mean, I. So anyway, I did send him the email, I haven't heard back, so I don't know what's going on yet. And then the last thing is something I also have yet to do, and that was with the contact, um, BHS or EAS, uh, vendor, regarding whether or not it would be acceptable for us to pay our employee who's gonna be out off of his accrued sub-time, I have, I was gonna do that tomorrow and hopefully get an answer.
Talking about Barry?
Well, I didn't want to mention names, but, yeah. So, um, yeah, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further, anybody?
No, that's good. Good job this year.
It won't come out.
Thank you, guys.
As soon as that doesn't help either, Dan, very much.
Yeah, but you had it made up there for a while.
Yeah.
Was it about the beach volleyball?
It didn't get moved, that was last time.
Okay, okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, I just, I just like.
About beach volleyball contracts.
Yes.
Okay. You want that? I think it has audio and video on.
I turned it on now, you know, I've been here the whole time, I wasn't drinking. See you, guys. Yeah, okay.
See ya.
Have fun.
G'day.